Order, Sheriff, to the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, to which it stands in recognition, under God, indivisible, and infinite, just as it is with our.
Okay, we have no appointment. The next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
First up is the Littleton Grant Award. In 2016 to 17, the town took over administration of the Opera House, and we began to take an active role in looking at its needs and also, under Sue Pilott's management, have begun to really look through and see what the town actually owns and do an inventory and see what isn't owned by the town and figure out, you know, where things are at as far as life safety code and really taking an in-depth analysis. One of the systems that we discovered we did not own is the sound system and also the lighting system inside of the main chamber. Both are very, the lighting is very antiquated and would be our next project, but the sound system also wasn't adequate. Early on, we started trying to get some regional entertainment names and they would ask us about, you know, "What's your sound system?" And we'd let them know and they'd let us know that, you know, they couldn't really come, so. What we did was we worked on developing a specification of what was needed and we applied for a Tillotson Fund Grant and we just received the notification and we were awarded $20,000, so that'll be put into good use.
That's great.
Next up, I have is the...
Let's back up and talk about how we have to deal with that. Because of the amount, we can't accept it without a public hearing. We will schedule a public hearing in the relatively near future.
Is that one public hearing or we have to have two?
We have to have one for something else that's coming up in a few minutes. But we all need one.
For that issue.
Next up, New Hampshire Department of Transportation let us know that they're doing a resurfacing project for next year. Since we've received the notification, we've been told that there could be an amendment to the plan. There's going to be some coordination with the Town of Littleton and with the DOT, mainly because Littleton has so much activity or planned activity on that road with Main Street Phase Two and the sub-area two storm project. And both of those are likely to take place between Meadow from Bridge Street to the diner and then on West Main up, I think, almost to the road that goes to where the police station and part of the campus and then up the hill. We're going to work with the DOT on those and there'll be some changes. Next up, the DOT has announced that the traffic lights at Lowe's and a Home Depot are going to be removed. As you're aware, the lights have been studied, they've gone under study for, I think it's been about a year now, and they decided that they're not needed, so they will be removed in sometime in the immediate future.
You will recall that when they proposed this, we had a session, I think we had a public input session, and we objected, and that's when they agreed to do the study, apparently. They found that our objection had no merit.
That's correct. Next up is the centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant. I believe I've written about it before, I don't know if I've really spoke about it at a public meeting. This is a critical component to the wastewater treatment plant. It's, I believe its original purchase was about a half a million dollars about 16 years ago. We've done some upgrades to it to keep it going. It's been 16 years with a lifespan of 10 years, and it's failed again. This time, the centrifuge has gone out of balance. We've isolated an issue where the holding tank is a concrete holding tank and that's beginning to break down. Some of the pieces from the concrete may be entering the centrifuge and may have broken it by putting it off balance. Like if your tire and your car gets off balance, only this spins at a lot higher speeds, so. When it's in full function capacity, this is the last stage in separating water from the raw sewage from the solids, and it produces what's called a 20% cake product, which historically we had just sent to the landfill. A few years back, we put that out to bid and we worked with a company called RMI, we were able to save money, and then also they created a reusable Class A fertilizer product. We would send, we had been sending that to their facility, they would further treat it and turn it into a marketable product from there. We're looking at alternatives right now for the long term, but for the immediate need, we need to get this thing back online because we're basically shipping out really wet material at really expensive trucking costs to, I believe Plymouth is where we're going with it right now.
Yes.
So, I had Dufrane Group conduct an independent analysis of our immediate options, and they come back with a recommendation to, just for timeliness, I mean, if you look at the amount of time it would take to get a new system in place, the amount of money we're paying in trucking would totally offset some of the other options. And a lease is looking really expensive and then to buy a new piece of equipment, about $409,000, so they're recommending that we repair the centrifuge. And what I'd be asking for from the select board would be to utilize the sewer...
Undesignated fund balance.
Undesignated fund balance for this purpose. I believe I was asking for an amount up to $65,000 to just allow, if there's any tendencies that come up during the repair.
Do we have that analysis of the cost of trucking this stuff and other?
Yes, yep, it's part of that 34-page report.
Oh.
Yeah, it's big.
All right, so I gotta find it in there.
It's probably harder than to do.
I know.
Yeah, if you want to take a look at it, we can have it. Basically, you can think about it this way, with, when this thing is operating at full capacity, we're sending out one truckload a week, and I think that we're up to four or five truckloads a week right now, so you can, and that, and the distance is greater. The other option, the reason we also want to do the repairs because we are part of Sub Two Sewer Project, we're talking with the USDA about including a long-term fix of this and other things that are coming to end of life at the wastewater treatment facility. And the reason we'd want to do that is because we can go after USDA World Development Funds, which has a loan and grant package, and also we can potentially go after the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for those, so that we're not paying 100% out of pocket out of the sewer unreserved fund balance. And we are looking at for the long term, an alternative process rather than using a centrifuge. It's called a screw press with a dryer system. It's used extensively throughout China, and if we do that, the savings from this system would pay for itself in three years directly. It produces up to a 95% dry cake versus a 20%. So that's something we want to do in the long term, but we want to try to work with one of the funding partners to do that.
We'll take that up under Board Action.
I recently went to a presentation about the Federal Opportunity Zone designation. I'm not sure how it happened, but Littleton was nominated and designated as an opportunity zone, which is pretty exciting. There's a tax benefit to those with a capital gains liability. They can defer their capital gains liability for up to 10 years, and if they invest in Littleton, they can get up to a 15% reduction in their capital gains liability. And it's a keep an investment in a for-profit activity in Littleton. Any gains that they have on top of that initial investment, tax-free, no capital gains tax. So it's a pretty huge incentive. The role of the town would be that, and we're starting the process now, is that we actually go out and meet and find entrepreneurs, business owners, developers who have potential projects, and then we also will be working with, you know, I've got on here universities, incubators, accelerators, other partners who also have projects, and then we can bring the funder and the developer and try to work to bring them together to make some exciting projects that might not have happened otherwise. So, for example, I'm talking with Alex Ritchie, you know, from Chapman with the Fisher Facility to see if there's a way we can work together, and NCIC to see if we can utilize them to look at creating an opportunity zone fund and have a fund manager maybe through them or some other entity.
And what's the cost of the town?
No cost of the town, just time.
Just?
Time.
Okay. I knew that, but I wanted to say it out loud.
Yeah, no cost of the town, and the towns can really benefit because these, while they, these entities or projects would be getting some capital gains benefit, that's to their federal capital gains, the town would still get any property tax revenue that's generated off of the improvement of property, so.
You don't know how we got on that list?
Not at all, no. Somebody nominated us. I would have to say, I'd have to give credit to the Governor's Office because ultimately the Governor's Office did submit that and submit Littleton as part of that. It could have been LIDC in partnership with the Governor's Office, I just haven't had a chance to look up and see who did it. But however it happened, I think we'll be grateful for it, so. Next up is the Land Water Conservation Fund. We received notification that we were awarded a $200,000 grant application. This is a project that we've been working on in the conceptual realm for a while. We brought the idea to the River District, the River District, along with a local resident engineer, Jim McMahon, who's been working with us to help us develop some site plans. And our grant package that we submitted, the project included, you know, funding enforcement, land acquisition, planning, consulting, permitting, architect and engineering, and then equipment. One of the concepts that's in there is this pavilion concept that you can see in the winter potentially could be used as a ice skating rink or ice skating rink, and then in the summer for farmers markets, concerts, weddings, and available for rental or just general public use. And it's part of a larger project for the parcel that's across from the covered footbridge and the senior center adjacent to that, so.
They gotta factor in some public restrooms in that same area, Andrew?
So final engineering will have to be done on the project and it would likely have restrooms and that sort of thing. I mean, there's quite a bit of potential here for a pretty neat community project, so. You know, initially, there's farmers, so the farmer's market, community garden, some exercise equipment, so I've talked about a splash park, playground, that sort of thing, so.
And like the Tillotson Grant, we can't accept the funds without a public hearing, which should be a little scheduled in the near future.
And next up, I have, let's see, what's on the menu here? I've got the parking, the Parking Commission Public Forum, and I've got Alex here from the North Country Council who's working under contract for the Town of Littleton. If you recall, North Country Council was able to get, I believe, $17,500 through Federal Highway designated to assist Littleton in its parking study, so Alex has been working as our staffer and providing all the technical assistance for the Parking Commission for this project. So, we'll introduce Alex.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Yes, I'm Alex Blunt, I'm a planner of North Country Council Regional Planning Commission. We're one of nine regional planning commissions in the state. We service the northern third of the state, one of the most 50 towns, and we're essentially an organization that exists to assist communities with projects like this. We also kind of serve as a middleman between towns and state agencies. We're able to help towns with projects a little more nimbly than state agencies are, and so we're helping Littleton out with taking a look at its parking situation and assisting the Parking Commission, which meets every other week, in developing a plan for managing parking in the downtown. Let's get to the next slide. So this, essentially, we're working on a four-step process to resolve this plan. We're working on an inventory of all the parking assets in the downtown area. We're studying the utilization of those parking assets to see where is, where are the highest demand areas for parking, where is parking being underutilized? We're going to be gathering public input on parking-related conditions and trying to get some, solicit some ideas from the public on how the town could do better in managing parking. This will all get boiled down into a plan that will have recommendations for the short, what's the town, what can the town do in the short term, what can it do in the medium term, what can it do in the long term, what's going to be most effective. And so, like I was saying, the plan will have an inventory of the parking assets, we'll present some data about utilization, parking, it'll provide a summary of what we heard from the public, and it'll include those recommendations. And the breakdown of the funding for the project, 90% of the funding is coming from us through our contract with the State Department of Transportation. It's being matched up to 10% by our contract with the town. Go to the next one. So, in the plan, we'll have some figures like this. This is basically what I call a heat map of parking, so we had people going out doing parking counts at different times of day, days of week, and we can look at where parking is most in demand at different times. So this was on weekdays between 9:30 and 11:00 in the morning, going from blue to the orange and red. Blue is kind of not really a whole lot of demand, not a lot of utilization. Orange and red means it was really, it was pretty much full. So you can see on this snapshot, on a weekday mid-morning, there was quite a bit of demand in some areas on the western part of Main Street and then in the River District, and then farther out west on Main Street, some lower demand. So we'll have information like this that the town can use to better understand when do we really need to be most actively managing this and when are kind of the peak times? So just to provide an example, kind of information, I'll be going to the next slide. Also, for the public parking areas, provide some kind of one-page profiles that'll have all kinds of information about infrastructure that's present, you know, what's there in terms of paving, lighting, number of spaces, metered, and then other amenities like other benches present. Some notes on what the conditions are like in the lot, things, things like, is there signage directing people to get there, who manages the lot, who owns it? Some graphs showing how the lot is being utilized at different times of day. So this is here at the community center in the metered parking spaces, so the highest accumulation that we saw was, it looks like 12 parked cars out of a total of 20 spaces. So this would indicate that this lot could be maybe promoted a little bit more, utilized a little more heavily. And so for the public parking areas, we'll provide this kind of detailed information that helps the town make some decisions about how they want to manage those areas. Going to the next slide. In terms of our process, we've done essentially all of our data collection at this point. We're moving now into our kind of public engagement portion of the process, and so later this week, we're having a public open house over at the elementary school, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. We're also having a forum specifically for local business owners to come and talk about the importance of parking to their business and what the town can do to help that relationship. Once they have all that feedback, we'll be working the Parking Commission to get some recommendations and really kind of build out this planning document. Since the New Hampshire Department of Transportation is funding most of the work in this plan, they want to do a review of kind of a draft plan to make sure that it's kind of up to their standards for when they fund this type of work. Then it'll come back to the town and the Parking Commission, from there, we'll turn it and develop into a finalized plan with a public hearing at the end of the process to look over what the recommendations are. So we're looking at, hopefully, March of next year, having a completed plan. The one area that is uncertain is this DOT review. They've been understaffed in the department that oversees this work, and we've had experiences where it's taken them longer than anticipated to complete that review, so hopefully it will only take a month or two, but it could take a little bit longer. So upcoming public events this week, Wednesday between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., we'll be at the Lakeway Elementary School gymnasium to have a public open house. It's a, the way we're setting it up, you can come by any time between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., a number of stations around the gym where people can provide feedback, answer questions about how they use parking, provide their ideas for the town, provide feedback. And so hopefully we'll get a lot of good ideas and insights from that event. The next day, at Thayer's Inn, we're doing a forum specifically for the local business owners, essentially getting at the same questions, how do you, what's the importance of parking to your business, and what feedback you have for the town, what ideas do you have? So hopefully, we can get some good turnout at those events, get some good ideas and some good feedback. That's all I have at the moment, and I can take questions after a little kind of hearing.
You're done?
I'm done, thank you.
Good. All business, we had the agenda policy, we had council comment on the two suggestions, two amendments to the policy, and both were okay. They are in your packet, and the new suggestions that we're about to implement into the policy are highlighted in red. If there's any discussion amongst us, now is the time for that, otherwise we'll move on it under Board Action. Nothing changed other than we got the fact that it was legal. Which finishes all business and takes us into new business. First thing on the agenda is two Budget Committee appointments. One is Dan Sterns for a two-year term, the other is Mel Brooks for a one-year term. Again, we will act on those under Board Action after we've had an opportunity for a public comment, if there is any. If there's comment amongst us, now would be the time for that. Next, three items are to do with the calendar and our meeting dates, which we ought to We'll see, in both November and December, we are only scheduled to meet as a board once in each month. However, we need at least one set to schedule a work session for our review of the budget, and we need to do that soon before it goes to Budget Committee. So I am looking for suggestions.
So you're saying we've got December 6th and December 27th, that's above and beyond the work session?
We're looking at November.
At that's the budget, reviewing the budget after it's been to the Budget Committee and comes back. We need to discuss it before. The Budget Committee has not seen it yet, nor are they supposed to until we've had a look at it.
Okay.
So we need to sit down as soon as we can get together and bless it before it goes to, or amend it or edit it or whatever we're going to do. Is it ready for us?
It is, it's right here for you.
To do, so I would suggest we do it soon. And soon would start with tomorrow.
I can do Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Yeah, we need 24-hour notice.
We need, right, Cill needs to do a 24-hour notice, so we could do it Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
What time?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
My challenge is having time to at least look at it before we meet, which I'd like to at least take a look at it. If it's, if it's not in the morning on Wednesday, I can squeeze in time to get through that if we do it in the afternoon.
We do have union negotiations.
That's right, but I've got union negotiations at 1:00, I don't know how long those go. And then at 6:00, there's the Parking Commission meeting. So, for me, for me, you know, considering those things, Thursday afternoon looks much better, if that works for you guys.
I can't Thursday.
Okay.
I have a local just been training at DOT for grants, and it's an all-day training. Have to go to.
Okay, I don't, I'll, I'll just overcommit as usual. Let's just do it Wednesday morning. Can we do it late morning at least? I don't know, how long do you expect this to take, us to go?
I'm doing job interviews from 9:15 to 11:15, so, I mean, I could do...
How about 6:00 a.m. from Wednesday morning?
How's Friday look?
Friday would have to be in the afternoon, I'm out of town.
I could do Friday afternoon.
Doesn't work for me.
What about?
Can we cram it in Wednesday afternoon? I don't know how long this should take.
It's my understanding.
It can take up to two hours.
Would you say, Cill?
It can take up to two hours the first time.
We did three to five.
Wednesday, I could potentially do 10:30 till 12:30, if that works for you, with that.
That would work for me.
As long as we're out at 12:30, because we got the union negotiations.
That's right, yeah.
Isn't it going to be here?
We are doing those, okay. For SEA at the Town Office.
Yeah, SEA's at the Town Office.
Okay. Wednesday at 10:30?
Wednesday at 10:30 at the Town Office, I assume.
Yeah, at the Town Office.
What else do we need to do, Cill, with November and December? Anything at this point?
Do we need to decide on public hearing dates, or can we do that within, outside of meeting?
We can do that outside of meeting, it's just a scheduling. We're going to need more work sessions in November and December.
I know.
But we can discuss that in a lighter date with an email, because you're not really making a decision, you're just scheduling.
Okay.
And we have some public hearings that we need to deal with, too.
Okay, so we'll leave that for now, knowing we're going to be filling it.
Right.
That takes us to the Town Office closure request for Monday, the 24th of December and Monday, the 31st of December. That's something we need to vote on as a board.
Just a little vacation.
Just, we're just letting you know if you have questions or concerns.
Yeah. I wouldn't take this lightly, I wouldn't take that.
We're not going to vote, yeah, okay. That finishes new business. It takes us to Board of Assessors, we have no business. That takes us to public comment. Do we have any public comment on any of the agenda items? Mr. Headlock?
I'm looking to find out what the assessments have been for the utilities on the town. In other words, public has had one around and they've done it, it really reflects on what the utilities have assessed that.
I believe you can find that out by contacting the Town Office.
Why can't I ask you? People are involved with it, why can't I ask you? You should know it.
I don't know it off the top of my head. I don't have it in front of me.
I'm asking you, I have all the board.
Pardon?
I'm asking the whole board, not that you.
I can't give you.
I would just say, it's a, so it's in the MS-1. The MS-1 is a seven-page document and it has a number of different things broken out, including utilities, but I wouldn't expect, you know, the board.
Are the utilities up or down?
I believe they're up.
That's the key factor for anybody being able to pay properly, is what you get on your utility bill.
Yeah, they're readily available, public information.
That's why I thought I came here to ask.
Would be much simpler if you simply contacted the office and not have to come to the Select Committee.
If you come by.
I have probably more time to come here than I do down.
We could, we could provide you with a 2016 and a 2017 MS-1, or just bring them We could, we could provide you with a 2016 and a 2017 MS-1, or just bring them to, when you come up, I could show you the difference, so you could see what went up and what went down, or if anything went down.
I guess I'm looking at it from my point of view, and I'm looking at it on the basis of the public's point of view. You've got upcoming bills that are going to be presented, and the people should know that that's the biggest single reflection in what somebody's going to get on their tax bill, is what you people end up with, the utilities. And the people should be able to know that.
It's public information.
I don't understand your problem. It's public information. You can get it from the town office.
We're not hiding anything.
You want us to have it off the top of our head? I'm sorry, I don't have it.
And as soon as the Department of Revenue Administration officially has, takes the MS-1 and says it's official, then I believe it's also, we could post it on our website. It's also posted on their website with all the other towns. It's really, their website's really useful, because you can take a look at Littleton and compare all sorts of different points of data with other communities, so.
But for the MS-1, as you said, it's a seven-page document, readily available. And if you'd like to compare it to the prior year, we can dig that out, too. Or 10 years, whatever you want.
The, well, I probably can ask the same thing, which you probably don't want to hear from her, too. What about the assessment on the hospital?
It's all in there. All in there.
That's one question. I had the, the next one I had was relevant to the, two things that were brought from his report out. One of them was the piece of land that was down in the back, that you were talking about and getting a grant for. Has that been presented to Littleton Planning Board?
I gave the Planning Board a presentation of different, of different projects that the town is working on. I believe that I've presented that either last year or earlier this year.
What was the outcome from the Planning Board based on the acquisition of this on number one?
I guess I don't understand you.
Well, the Planning Board is a planning board. That's what the Planning Board is supposed to be doing. And my question would be, have you gone to the Planning Board and presented it, and have the Planning Board had a chance to analyze it and figure it out whether they should do it, support it, recommend it or not? That's what the Planning Board is for.
Again, we can research the Planning Board minutes for you, if you like, and answer your question.
But there isn't a final plan to have been presented yet, is there?
No, but my question was, have you done it to the Planning Board with your stuff? Otherwise.
The answer to the question is yes.
Yeah, like I think Scott was looking to, you probably could go search the minutes to see when and what was presented, if it reflects all of that. And we may have even got a letter of support for the project. I'd have to go through that.
That's what I was questioning.
Right, from, from the Planning Board.
Another one, your storage disposal plant, I had to go down there. I looked at what was happening down there. A company, and I came back and I asked you, Andrew, who's in charge of the maintenance down there for the whole entire thing? In other words, we hire a company to operate it from that part. I was turned off what I saw down there, that that's one of the most expensive investments the town ever has. And I looked around and comparing it to what I felt, because it wasn't being painted, it wasn't being upgraded, it didn't look like it was being serviced or done well. And I didn't know whether it's the town's responsibility, or it's this company we're hiring.
And so Bruce came by, we had a, we had a good discussion. He brought back these points to me, and I had to let him know that it was very timely, because right now, we're actually working with, I believe it's under the CWSRF program, Water Savior Ball, to develop a 10-year CIP for the facility. We're, I think we're getting close to having it. In fact, I saw some emails this afternoon saying they want to do a wrap-up as part of that process. And we do work with utility partners to maintain. We put away, I believe, about $50,000 a year in the budget for regular upgrades, whether it be to pump stations or items inside the facility. I know that this year, we had to use a lot of those funds because of the broken centrifuge. We've been using some of the maintenance funds to offset the costs of shipping the raw material to the facility at Plymouth to be treated, so. But those are, those are timely.
It's an observation. I looked at it when I went down there, and it just looked like somebody's not doing their homework on taking care of that facility down there. But I don't care who it was, whether it's the town's responsibility or the people you're hiring, but it just, it just doesn't look like it's a position where big investment, that's one of the most expensive investments the town has, next to schools and stuff like this on it. And if it's not being taken care of and maintained, it could be running a tremendous amount of money into taking care of it.
Well, it sounds like the town manager has addressed your concern.
No, he hasn't.
He's addressing her concerns.
Right. But I'm just bringing it to the attention, because I think it really should be followed
Is there any other public input? Being done, we will move to board action. And we have, by my count, four items. The first of which is the wastewater treatment plan, and that amount was $65,000, is that correct?
Yep.
So we need a motion to authorize the town manager to spend up to, not to exceed $65,000, to repair the centrifuge.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. Number two is our agenda policy to, I would entertain a motion to accept the two changes to the agenda policy, one of which is that the time devoted to the agenda policy can be lengthened or shortened at the chairman's discretion. Currently, it's 20 minutes. The other is for appointments, an exception can be made if there is sufficient urgency at the discretion of the town manager.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number three is the first of the budget committee appointments. That was Dan Sterns for a two-year term. Do I have a motion?
Were there just two positions to be filled, or?
There are two recommendations for filling positions on the Budget Committee.
Okay.
The first is Dan Sterns for a two-year term. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The last was Mel Brooks for a one-year term. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
That, I believe, are the only items that require board action. The meeting is adjourned. However, we do need to go into non-public session. Do I have a motion to go into non-public session?
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
You've got to look around, you know, when somebody raises a hand, maybe they got a question for you or for the board.
I closed public comment, but.
You're not closing or keeping your comment, because you made the mistake by saying that they added two appointments for the Budget Committee. I got a letter right here, like, three appointments for the Budget Committee. But this is not, because I'm going to sue you in court, you know? Right, it's got three, not two. Three.
What are you talking about?
Three. Oh, yeah? You want a copy?
I can't see it from here.
Of course. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy. I give it to you, assistant, oh, yeah. You can read it there.
You said there was two.
This bullshit has had to stop.
It says there are three vacancies.
Okay. That's.
And the thing, Chairman, you said there were two recommendations.
There are two recommendations.
I tried to be a wise guy, because you are Chairman, whatever you are.
There are two recommendations. We made two appointments.
Do you have a third request?
I do.
Do we have to dispose of that?
You can resign, that's the only thing, this town's going to be okay. Resign. It's still over. So nobody wants you.
Would you please be quiet?
Yes.
Yeah, they'd still be open for different members of the public to submit their letters of interest.
Yes, there were other letters of interest submitted. We have chosen not to act on them. As I said.
And also, it's your obligation to reply. If somebody sent you a letter or a intent, it's your obligation to reply. It's your obligation, read the laws, read the municipal laws.
Are you done?
See what happens.
That's enough. The meeting is adjourned, with the exception of the non-public session.
I mean, I second the motion.
Is there further discussion about going into non-public session? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourned. Thank you.